In Peggy King's absence, I'll call the meeting to order. And first up is Finance.
So I'll call Finance meeting to order. First and only item up so far, Audit 2013.
Hello.
Hello.
Before I sit down to walk you through, does everybody have a copy from the packet around their tablet with any?
Yep.
Excellent. Good. So, we have Mr. Kusak and his member from his staff, John Topolowski, that are here to answer any questions you have. What I'm going to do right now is just walk us through the audit and the management letter, and then Mr. Ferrari will walk you through the single audit. So when I talk about the audit, I'm talking about the large document regulatory basis financial statements. You'll note this year that the first sixteen, excuse me, first eight pages consist of a management discussion and analysis. That's new this year, that was drafted by the city. As well as the notes, which are always in our financial statements, were initially drafted by city staff. Both of those steps have brought us closer to being in compliance with one of the GASB rules, Rule 34. If you want to go directly to page 12, it's where you're going to find the balance sheet for the general fund. And you'll see, if you go right to the bottom, you'll see that our balance is 14.4 million, our fund balance. And that is resulting from a $1.5 million surplus, which we'll talk about in just a moment. Our fund balance of 14.4 has a $6.9 million unrestricted component, and that is approximately 8.7 percent of our projected 2014 adopted budget. So we have a very strong liquidity level, which served us really well when we went through a rating review with the rating agencies. So it's everyone's efforts that's brought that about. Fund balance includes a $1.6 million capital reserve, capital project reserve, and that reflects a million dollar deposit that we're making to that for the close of 2013. And again, that capital project reserve and this fund and others positions us to have the capability to fund capital projects that are proposed by the mayor and approved by city council, rather than to go into the bond market and use debt to support those. Any questions on the balance sheet, or if I'm going too quickly, someone yell at me. Page 13 for the general fund shows you the revenues and expenditures.
Debbie, I think we're off on pages.
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right.
I'm working from a printed out copy, so I apologize.
Just if you can give us the heading, so we know what's taking place.
It's a page that follows.
The right-hand corner has 13.
Oh, I see.
Right in the page.
The center is the backup page.
I don't think of the document page. Oh, and it...
We have the document pages too, so try to...
Okay.
Everything's under control. Got it now? Good.
So this is where you'll see, if you look at the third column where it says "actual," go all the way to the bottom where it says "excess deficiency of revenues and other sources over expenditures." That 1,461 number, that's your surplus. Actual revenues, supported expenditures, and then added another 1.4 to our fund balance. If you were to look at the, from a budget perspective, if you look at the actual revenue to the revised budget, it shows us shortfall of about 3.4 million. However, what you want to do really is you want to adjust out certain variances that are created by bond premium, which you don't budget for, but we report here. And so when it goes against a zero budget, it causes you to think that there is a deficiency when you look at your budget. In addition to that, we made the county hole for 2012 taxes. We did that without having it in our budget, and various transfers to capital projects. So if you take all those adjustments out, our revenues actually exceeded the budget by about $800,000. Key areas where revenues exceeded the budget were our real property tax collections, about 1.3 million, insurance recoveries by about 700,000, and interest earnings by about 200,000. Our revenue didn't meet budget. Parking fines and truck inspections together were under budget by about 600,000. Property sales were under budget by about 400, and our rental certificate fee was under by about 300. If you look at your actual expenditures, which is the bottom part, you'll see that 4.9 million number, that's comparing the modified budget to actuals. Our expenditures were less than the budget. And again, if you do the various adjustments that we'd want to do, there were the two lines that were created during the 2013 budget, which were about $600,000 each, which we were not going to spend from unless we went before city council. There was an ordinance that we did spend a small amount of that, but if you compare and you adjust out that budget variance, our expenditures were under budget by about 3.8 million, driving much of the surplus that we had. Key areas where we were under budget was the hospital and medical insurance, under budget by 2.1 million. I just want to give a little color to that. We have to keep in mind that there's about $737,000 that we carries a liability on the balance sheet that represents healthcare expenses in 2013 that aren't going to be paid in 2014, whether it be billing or whatever, or known occurrences that just haven't come through the billing system yet. So that 2.1, if life were to end now, is actually about a 1.4, changed from the budget, being under budget. Total debt service was under budget by about 800,000. Reason for that, and you're going to see this across all the funds, is that when the 2013 budget was put together, it was, the city was given the capability to go into the bond market if it wanted to, but we chose not to, so we had those additional debt service funds in there that helped to fuel the surplus. Total fire protection was under by about 300,000. And then various departments such as judgments and claims, street administration and maintenance, refuge and garbage and codes, they were each under about $100,000 each. Finance administration, law and traffic control were under by about 800, excuse me, about 80,000 each. So it was a combination of all that that drove what's before you today.
Are those breakouts available to us somewhere?
Yes, I mean, you can see them generally in these...
In general, right.
Right.
But the individual departments either...
Those are available, and they can be provided.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just flip for a second to the management letter, because the management letter basically addresses the general fund. The management letter is in your packet, and what I want to mention about that is there were four items that were addressed in the 2012 management letter, and the next year's management letter always speaks to those items and says, "How have you done since they were identified?" So you'll see in the 2013 letter that all of those have been fully addressed, with the exception of the fixed asset for the GASB 34. The city is weighing its options as how to get into compliance, but it is not an unusual situation for a municipality not to have a full inventory of its fixed assets. And from the perspective of any new issue identified for the 2013 audit, there were none. So I think we should feel pretty good about that, and we appreciate Kusak's comments on the items that they found and their help in moving through those. Any questions or anything before I go forward?
Yeah, so in terms of just having no new items or issues found, that means that's a great thing, right? It means that we're doing a lot of things right. I guess for me, it was surprising, not that, hey, we're expecting to be done wrong, but when you're looking at an audit, you would generally expect some findings. It is a complex operation, right? So are we surprised that we have, that there's no findings or minor findings?
Well, I guess what I can say is just from my experience in my career, management letters are, in the audits that I've been involved in when I came to the city, that was the first time that I had seen a management letter with issues like that. I think it all depends upon, you know, in my experience, part of that was in authorities. So I don't know that it's all that commonplace for there to be issues. I think it's dependent upon the operation and how things are being addressed.
I think the finance office is very proactive in calling throughout the year, emailing. So any issue that may arise at the audit level gets sorted through throughout the year. And what we found this year, while we may have some discussions of relatively minor items, we didn't feel that there was anything that would merit bringing to the finance committee and to the city council. We worked through all those other, but we didn't find anything this year that was substantial enough that we felt merited attention.
Thank you, Jim. And that's correct. We have been very communicative throughout the year in bouncing issues off of the office, and that's very helpful. So we identify things early on.
Any other questions?
So if you want to go back to the audit, page 14 of the document, I believe, is So both for the water, sewer and recreation funds, the funds we're going to be talking about right now, you'll see that they're all on one page. Top of the page is your balance sheet, assets and liabilities. The second half of the page is your statement of revenues and expenditures for the year. So if you look at the water fund balance sheet, you're going to see that reflecting a approximate $860,000 surplus, we have a fund balance now of 4.9 million. It was 4.1 million in 2012 in there. You're going to find, if you, when you look through the audit on page 48 in the notes, you'll see a detail of all the reserves. But this fund has a $2.8 million capital project reserve, and that reflects about a deposit of $1,100,000 at the close of this, of 2013, into that capital project fund. The second piece of the page is the operations. Actual revenues fell slightly short of the budget by, and expenditures were under budget by about 1.3. And there are certain adjustments here that you can make, so you can really see that we really were under budget only by about $161,000 for revenues, because the appropriated fund balance there was the way that we move money through when we use money from the reserves. So it really shouldn't be looked at as not being within budget. Key components where expenditures were less than budget include our reservoir and pumping together. They represented about $600,000, and mainly that was due to light, power and gas line in those areas. Water distribution and debt service were under by about 200,000 each, and the hospital and medical insurance by about 100,000.
What is home and community services under, I'm seeing this under other lines, what is, is that different for each category, or...
It depends. I can look that up potentially.
I'm sorry, I just thought...
No.
Because I know the report, I'm just trying to figure what that line value is.
Just give me a second.
Put the kids up.
I was wondering, it's for the kids, geez, I'll take it.
No, it's a term that's used by the controller. And Anthony and I will get there first, one of those. Sorry, can't find it right away.
Why don't you let Tony look, and you can keep going. My apologies.
No, that's all right.
I think he's got it.
You got it?
Personal Service Administration, Government Support.
But I think you're looking, were you looking in the water fund?
Well, around the first three, they're on water funds, sewer fund, they're all in there, and general fund.
So that's 4 million. So where's the 4 million?
It's right there.
That's 48, that's 4...
Tony, you can move on, please.
No, that's a good question.
I guess we can find out, yeah.
So for the sewer fund, which is on the following page, same format, and interestingly enough, from an operations standpoint, pretty similar surplus. Again, at $860,000. If you look at the fund balance at 7.4, we were at 6.6 in 2012. In this fund, we have a capital project reserve of about 3.7 million, and that reflects about a $1 million deposit at the close of 2013. And in this fund, revenues tracked very close to budget, and expenditures were under budget by a bit. So that pretty much shows you right away where, what contributed to that surplus. Sewage treatment disposal were under by about 4 million, sanitary sewers by about 200, excuse me, I should have said 400,000 for sewage treatment disposal, and sanitary and sewers about 200,000, with debt service about 100,000. For the recreation, which is on the following page, recreation fund is our ball fund. In the ball fund, we had a slight decline in our fund balance, and that's reflecting the fact that we had a deficit of about $4,000. But what I want to point out here is, in 2013, there was, there were expenses from 2012 that were identified that weren't paid in 2012, should have been paid in 2012. They surfaced in the first quarter, I believe, of 2013, and they were about $10,000. So obviously had to pay those, pay those with 2013 funds. In addition, the city did begin operation of the Pro Shop in 2013 without having budgeted for it. So even with doing that, if you were to then adjust out your $10,000, we would have had a slight surplus. So really, that fund is operating very well, and reflects the change in management and the direction that it's going in. If you look at your actual activity budget, it looks like revenues fell slightly short of the budget, and expenditures were under budget by roughly the same amount. So that really was a good year for the budget there. The remaining pieces of the audit deal with the downtown connected improvement fund. No surprises there, nothing unusual. Missing a special revenue fund, that's your Upper Union Street Business District. Since there was no balance sheet activity, there was no need to report that here, just in case you're wondering to see that if there was any activity there. Special grant fund, that's all our special grants. Nothing noteworthy here to point out anything different from last year. Capital project funds, again, reports all the activity regarding the various capital projects that the city has. And there's really nothing here to highlight. I will say that when you do have time, and you certainly have any questions, be sure to contact anyone here at the city, Anthony and myself. And also, when you read the MDNA, that's intended to give you sort of a bird's eye view, and I think it'll get into some things that you might have questions after tonight's meeting. Trust and agency fund, that reports all of our trust and agency accounts. Basically, we have a lot of, several accounts for deferred comp, retirement, federal tax, the way we run money through, and then there's a core amount of accounts we call private purposes, like the rose garden, the dog park, that type of thing. That's what you see there.
Was there any activity on that account, I mean, in terms of expenditures, nearly in and out, or is it, does it all get transferred out at the end of the year? How does that explain itself to me a little bit?
Well, the each, yes, the, like, the deferred comp, the retirement, funds flow through there. You might have a balance because you've got funds that...
The trust and agency.
Well, the trust and agency does include those business accounts, where the monies in there are for a specific purpose, and it does flow in and out. At the end of a year, you might have, you might not have a zero balance, because you've got money put in that's going to be flowing out the next time. The private trust and agency accounts, you're going to see a balance in there, because we hold monies on behalf of the rose garden or the dog park.
Can we get at some point in the future just a list of all the things that fall into that?
Sure.
And balances, are they balanced, kind of, what would...
Yep.
I think about the rose gardens, I'm thinking, okay, but I don't know, I have a amount up to 700,000, so I'm just kind of curious to where.
So are you, okay, you're looking for detail for...
Yeah, just a list of everyone, everyone who's, every account that...
With a balance?
That falls under that trust and agency.
Yeah. And the MDNA, it does describe just generally the division of accounts, but I can get you the detail on that too.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the last item that I'm going to talk about here is the non-current government liability group. And this is basically a total view of what the city's overall liabilities are out into the future, and the funds that we would have to have to support those. So it has your post-employment benefits calculated out, bonds and capital notes payable, the total amount due over time, as well as amount due to the retirement system, compensated absences, which were people who've earned that we would have to pay. And there's no real surprises here either.
Looks just like my budget at home.
Commas are good sponsors. Just a quick question on this, the other post-employment benefits?
Yep.
I mean, I understand retirement, you know, due to retirement systems up above and compensated absentee, what's post-employment benefits, other post-employment benefits? Is that, I mean, it's health, I think that the retirement would be up there. Is it health insurance?
Yes.
For retirees?
Sure. No, go ahead.
A few years ago, again, the Council of Council required municipalities to have an actuarial evaluation of the net present value of the future benefits that will be paid to your employees and your current retirees by retirement health insurance benefits. So when your contracts provide for health insurance for employees and spouses for a period of time after they retire and they earn that benefit, there's now a requirement that we have an actuarial evaluation of what the present value is of the liability. The number is substantially higher than this number, but the pronouncement also allows you to amortize that liability in over 30 years. So there's at least two pages of footnote, and maybe it'll pitch you a note.
I think it's on page, begins on page 46.
So that 41, that line on the other benefit, that 41 million is really the total future liabilities amortized over 30 years?
That's the net present value of over a 30-year amortization. The total liability is $241 million, present value today.
Okay.
And it is page 46 and 47. It talks about, you know, they update the assumptions in terms of future increases and cost increases for healthcare going forward. They run, you know, the actuarial company does a determination of that. And then each year, you pick up a portion of that into your long-term debt group accounts for a non-current liability.
Okay. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
And just getting back, I know Councilman Kozier has left the room momentarily, but to the question to the total home and community services for the water, that actually is our water administration, our source, supply, power and pump department, and our water transport and distribution. It's those three areas together that make that up. So it's those components that actually are a direct service to the community. And that and these definitions are how we pull things together to report to the state.
I'm sorry, Debbie, said water transportation.
The water administration.
And what was the third thing?
The source, supply, power and pump, and the third was water, transport and distribution.
I'll just slide it.
Yep. So that concludes what I was going to run through. And if you don't have any questions, I think Mr. Ferrari will talk about the single audit. Does that work?
Because the city disconnected, expensed more than 500,000 of federal funds, a single audit of these expenditures is required. Now, the single audit provides assurance to the federal government as to the management and use of the federal funds that the city has expended. Now, if you look at, let me see, page seven, which would be Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards in the Single Audit. Is that page seven to you? That's all.
Seven, page seven. Yes. Page seven.
Seven on your side, or seven on the...
Page seven on the Single Audit.
Oh, it's all in the back.
Okay.
Is this it?
That's correct.
All right, so page 73, if you're looking at the middle number.
We're way off. We're way off. Sorry about that.
It says seven in the bottom ranking corner, 73 in the middle. So it's, you know, each section is kind of numbered together.
As you can see, in 2013, the city of Schenectady, we had expended $11.4 million in federal funds. Now, that's broken up by $5.99 million spent on HUD, which represents 52.5 percent of total funds. And the HUD projects that we spent it on were CDBG, emergency shelter grant, the home grant, special needs, and the lead reduction grant. 4.4 million, or 38.5 percent, was spent from the U.S. Department of Transportation. This is basically the Erie Boulevard project that we've been running. And in fact, since 2010, we spent 8.8 million, so we're coming to a close on that. 6 percent, or 718,000, came from the Department of Justice. That is for the grants for the bulletproof vest, our police grants, and our DEA equitable sharing grants. 3 percent, or 311,000, came from the Homeland Security, which I purchased, if you go through the city, you see a lot of the cameras on the streets, and also a lot of equipment that the police department is using for the PLESA equipment. Now, if you look at page, I guess it would be 72, 72 or 71, which is, I'm thinking there. It's the opinion on each major federal grant program.
The best, or is it the list?
One page, not the list. Okay. I don't know why I have a different one, but you guys share it, right up there.
Opinion on each major, okay. Page 70.
Page 70. If you look at page 70, you would see the opinion of the auditors on each of the major programs. And as you can see, the city has complied in all material respects with the types of compliance and requirements referred to that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ending December 31st, 2013. on each of its major federal programs for the year ending December 31st, 2013. So, once again, you know, the city has complied in all respects for all the procedures and requirements that the federal government has requested. So if that's page 70, at page 71, the last sentence on the report of scheduled expenditures, the last sentence, it was the opinion of the auditors that the schedule of expenditures of federal awards fairly stated in all material respect in relation to the regulatory basis of financial statement as a whole. So, once again, the city has, has received a great audit for the federal compliance. And right now, I want to thank the Finance Department, our accounts, for doing such a great job and hard work that they do to produce these financials, to be able to get these good audits to keep us flowing with the federal funds. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you know how long we have this company doing audits? How many years now they're doing the audit for the city of Schenectady?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate you, you and your team's diligent effort on, on this stuff, and explained it well. Is there anything else to come before Finance? Is there a motion to re-?
Yes, yes. We need to accept the audit.
Oh, we need to accept the audit, all right. So-
Second.
You're moving it, yes, you're moving it, move it, I'll second it. I think Peggy's the third person on Finance, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? I. Now, is there anything else to come before Finance? John, you have any?
No.
Anybody else? How about a adjournment?
There's a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, a call to order, City Development and Planning, Council on Economic Strength Presentation, coming up, I would assume, next, this next council meeting, which is Wednesday of next week, we'll have the Green Market come in and give a presentation, I assume that's what that is, pretty straightforward, is checking, is, they're coming in on Wednesday. Excellent. Any questions about that? Your next-
Sounds strong.
Okay, I'll tell you, I, I worked my four-ember shift on Sunday, and it was, it was hustling and bustling, it was, it was beautiful day, so, they're alive and well, it's going to be Green Market. And then, Mr. Kozier asked me to pass this out with regard to the Purple Heart City has killed a small tree. Bill Frank will be coming, this is ceremonial resolution, request, Bill Frank will be coming with some veterans, the mayor has agreed to leave the purple lights on, the county has already been designated a Purple Heart County, in turn, we would like to be designated a Purple Heart City. Questions on this, anyone? So I'll ask for a motion.
A motion?
Now, second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And is there anything else to come before City Development and Planning? I ask for a motion to adjourn. A second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll call, call to order government operations. Chapter 210 revisions, Mr. Kozier did not read me on this, can I now speak to it?
All right, I can speak now, please. What we're proposing here is to perform the MHA Section 8 rental inspections through the Building Department. Currently, I'm sure you're all aware that all the rental inspections for private property is done through the Building Department. MHA handles all Section 8 rentals. Therein being said, there's a little bit of a disconnect between rental property inspections that we do and the rental inspections that they do. There's different nuances with regard to what they're inspecting. Beyond that, when they're going there, they're only required to inspect the rental property. So we can move into a situation where they've approved rental units, but the actual envelope property and those things are in non-compliance. So, we've been asking and communicating for the past year, and, you know, with some success to say that when they come across what they think might be a violation, to bring it across to us, and then we're kind of cross-reusing resources and going back and forth. So what we're proposing is that we perform all of this, all the Section 8 rental inspections on behalf of MHA. We would treat them much as we do as a landlord, when they call us for a, for an inspection, we would go out, perform that, give the results of that, pass or fail, and let them go on and apply their, their client informations and their business on top of that. So we simply be performing a uniform inspection on behalf of a rental unit in the city that would be uniform, adopting all of the MHA nuances and needs that they need for their inspections, along with ours. We've been working with them to produce a uniform rental inspection that would be the same for every rental property throughout the city. That would give us the opportunity then, not only to be aware of where the Section 8 rentals are, which we're unaware until either there becomes an issue, or, or somehow we bump across that, which also tends to lend itself to other things on that property or within that property that we're unaware of, so we'd get a little bit behind on certain things like that. We'll be providing a uniform rental inspection for all rental property in the city.
And just to clarify, that may happen more, the proposal is, and also Mr. Kozier, expanding rental certificates, right now for Section 8 housing is exempt from having to get our rental certificate. So Section 8 units, the owners would have to get the rental certificate from the city. Municipal Housing Authority is working on there and being able to accept that rental certificate in lieu of their own inspection. So we'd be expanding it in that sense, but this is for units that the owners know they're going to get paid by the federal government, once they have the people in there. So, that's the technical way we're going about this.
Mr. Schrein, what kind of impact does this have on your staff? Is this easier, harder, more, less?
Well, we're going to remain to be seen at this point. We think we're going to, you know, we're going to attempt this with the current resources, and then, they have a historical number they've provided to us for the past five years, right around 500 annual inspections for first-time rentals. They'll, they also do subsequent follow-ups. After 12 months, MHA has a requirement that after 12 months, and in any lease agreement or other, it's a current tenant remaining to stay, they go in and do a subsequent inspection. We wouldn't perform that, we would do the initial. They're performing annually right now, about 500 inspections annually. You know, it's certainly something that would be taxing to take on, and they're willing to try and do that. But I think the larger picture here is to have a uniform inspection, rental inspection for every unit in the city. You know, as we see that play out, and we may have to talk about that becoming something where, you know, we're effectively taking on another 500, there's another agency was doing and supporting, and doing that, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and we'll let you know, you know, moving forward, if we're at a point where we need to, back to ask for more resources to handle, you know, that alone. That's, that's right around the number that a full-time housing inspector would handle on an annual basis. So we're willing to take that on right now, and see how that plays out with, you know, with the resources that we have.
So can I just ask you, I'll continue next, John, I'm sorry. What, what, um, what advantage of this, what, what is the advantage to the city on this, other than the, the, you know, I mean, you know, like, is MHA finding, falling behind, or doing that?
Well, they, they've certainly been taxed, their, their budgets have been cut, and they're certainly taxed, there's no doubt about it. But beyond that, it's, they're, again, performing inspections on properties that landlords may have entirely Section 8 tenants. Those properties may have envelope or property issues that would be caught in our typical rental inspections, not necessarily denying the rental, but certainly giving us information to work with the landlord, to, you know, to prove the property, the building itself.
During their inspections, they don't even require carbon monoxide?
They don't, they have-
No.
So the city is actually a tighter inspection than MHA?
On certain points, certainly.
Which is why we're looking, okay.
And what we've done is, we've supplied, we've supplied them with our rental inspection form, they've supplied us with ours, and, and we've melded that together. They are reviewing currently that new uniform inspection. If there's anything that needed to be added to that, we're certainly willing to accommodate that. But it gives us a lot more global perspective of the rental buildings and units in the city. They, you know, as they supply us issues, and they supply us informations, these are things that we could have been there and addressing at the time. They're not, you know, fully trained in the full property and structure and all that thing, so it really gives us a lot of-
So we're bringing MHA up to city standards?
Up to city standards.
Okay, great. Mr. Mujiere?
Sure.
Oh, Ms. Porterfield?
So, how does this work in terms of, do, because a Section 8 is a federal program, it's HUD. So how does this work? Do we need to have some kind of agreement, I mean, are there other municipalities doing it where there's HUD inspections, Section 8, and then there's city, and now we're combining them? You know, how would that change their reporting to HUD and any of that?
It wouldn't.
What's the impacts on that?
It wouldn't, because we'd be basically performing the same inspection that their inspectors do. So, they would ask us to perform an inspection, we would provide them the results, and they would go and then continue on with that, placing that client, completing their MHA informations, and working their program as they're required by the federal government. We're simply getting the knowledge and experience in that building and rental unit to say that it is up to city standards, it is up, and it meets MHA standards also. It gives us a little bit more global knowledge, it shouldn't affect MHA at all, and their inner workings. Is that the question?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. So, usually when someone has Section 8 and they want to rent an apartment, they have to, Section 8 goes in to make sure the apartment's acceptable for a sale. That's what the city's going to be doing now?
Yes, that's their rental inspection, so to speak. And they have standards and requirements in there, we also have standards and requirements. They're very much in parallel of each other. There are some nuances, so what we've done is, we've brought ours together, and our reports, our inspection forms and reports together. We've provided them what we believe to be uniform, which is encompassing of everything that they have, plus what we have, and they're more than willing to adopt, obviously, something a little more stringent, and be uniform throughout the city. So, I think that's been accepting on their part, to understand that we would be eliminating a workload that they're extremely taxed and can get behind on, and we would take on a uniform rental throughout the city.
And what impact would it have on the people that are looking for apartments? Because those Section 8 vouchers have like a timeframe, that says you have this much time to find someplace to live. And then if you don't, and then if you don't, you know, you have to go back and start over again, so that your voucher doesn't run out. So are we going to be able to do that in that timeframe, so that it doesn't impact the people who are looking for a place to live?
We fully believe we can, certainly to start, you know. We'll have to look at this based on our rental loads. We are actively, you know, pursuing a landlord registration program, which is, is requesting information for the people we didn't have information on. And when we get that into full implementation, that is certainly going to bring in customers that haven't participated in the registration program before, so, with the resources that we have, we're willing to start out and try it. I think the benefits far outweigh, you know, when we bump into that moving forward, they, I'll bring to you numbers, actual historicals, and what they have, to show that our resources, our resource needs may need to grow. Until then, we're willing to address this and take this on at this point. I, we're not going to be outside the five-day requirement of an inspection request to inspection completion. So we shouldn't affect, they have a 30-day window for an inspection to be completed, issues to be taken care of to place that person at the end of 30 days. If that apartment isn't compliant, whether they did the inspection or we didn't, they'll ask that client to move on and will choose another apartment. But we'll have their inspection requests completed within five days, if that's, and that's currently what we promise the citizens, or the property owners here in the city, and we've rarely gotten outside of that. We'll have, we'll use code officers if we have to, outside, you know, the use of the housing inspectors to complete this. We're going to maintain that schedule for them, one way or another, and then again, we'll have to address the council if resources are taxed, again, we'll be taking on an additional 500 or more rental inspections, so that, you know, there is revenue component to that to us, that we weren't realizing before. But I think greater than that, we're getting a uniform inspection throughout the city. And we're aware of the building envelope and the property in, in total, to, which we're not.
Mr. Mujiere?
This is the initial inspection done by your staff, correct? And then do we follow up?
The 12-month follow-up, because we don't have in the city a requirement that every 12 months that a rental inspection be redone, if a client chooses, or a renter chooses to stay beyond 12 months. So they would do that 12-month follow-up.
Section 8, MHA?
Section 8, MHA would do that. And they would then be able to, you know, maintain their consistency in their reporting requirement needs. At that point, we would still hopefully have that good communication that we've been trying to develop, where they would make us aware of other issues. And again, their training doesn't allow them to really take notice of the property and the building in, in the total, and, and is what we need.
Mr. Jefferson?
Does, do we get compensated for doing the service?
We do, we do. What would happen also here would be, the landlords right now, when they, when they apply for Section 8 rentals, they don't have an inspection fee. But given the fact that we're going to go uniform across the city, those landlords would now be paying that $50 that they do for, any landlord would, for typical rental inspection would be coming to us. And in our discussions with MHA, they were going to have to make one move, one way or another. They were losing ground and revenue and resources, they were going to have to eventually work toward getting some sort of fee for service. So I think that was going to be the eventuality in the way you looked at it. But beyond that, these, they would, the landlords would pay for that $50. But again, they're, if this, if their apartment passes, they're guaranteed funds from the federal government for that client, versus a private landlord could put a, place a client in, or a renter in, with no guarantees. So, I don't think it's going to be necessarily an obstacle to those landlords that were receiving these MHA inspections, and then receiving clients in guaranteed funds.
But I mean, MHA is not reimbursing us, I mean, right now they're paying the service, and-
They're, we're getting out of their budget.
MHA is making, they're making a, a lot of headway on this deal. They just get to hand off this responsibility to us, but they're not reimbursing us anything for it?
Well, technically, the way it's going to work is, MHA, in anticipation of us moving this idea, has requested from HUD permission to use our rental inspection in lieu of their own. So all they need is proof that the unit is safe, so they're going to take ours. The way the city gets compensated is, we're going to get the money from landlords when they call for the inspection. We, it's not even a necessity that we have any type of real agreement with Municipal Housing Authority on this, because we think this is a good idea, moving forward, whether or not they're able to use our inspections.
Prior to this, the Section 8 were exempt, and we did not inspect it.
Right. So we had little or no knowledge of the actual physical condition of that, and we have multiple units in there. We could miss entire buildings with envelope and property issues that, you know, could create, you know, the problems that we, we see all too often.
Yeah, I just think that MHA should reimburse us some amount for this, but, okay.
Well, they're, and that, I don't know how that, it's just, they're coming out of their funds, now we just have the landlord pay for that, and also, we're working on our-
From a general idea, it's, it's more efficient, right? So instead of two organizations doing the same thing, which is that we're, we're doing the work-
Typically, they would give us an issue, we'd have to dispatch somebody to do basically that job over again, and then come up with, so we're, there's a redundancy there. And then, you know, we need to gain knowledge on these buildings and properties, and it's a good way to do that also. And then we're, you know, there's, there's a consistency to what we're asking of any landlord, whether it be an MHA client, a private client, anyone, that that consistency is there, of what exactly is inspected and what's compliant.
So, yes, I have one more, another question. In terms of the rental certificates, the way it is now, if, every time there's a change in tenancy, you, they have to get a new rental certificate?
Correct.
So how's this going to work with, with a Section 8, because, you know, they are, you already explained how they have this annual thing they're going to do, so how does that all fit together? Because it seems like a lot of inspecting.
Well, and it, and it can be. If a client, a Section 8 client vacated a rental property, if the landlord wanted to put in another person, whether it be a Section 8 client or a private, they would simply call it the same way, they would maintain the same requirements, the same procedures as, you know, there'd be no distinction between either Section 8 or a private citizen or regular citizen renting from a private-
There'd be no additional inspections?
With the exception of, as MHA will be coming in every year?
MHA would do their annuals. They require by the federal government to have a 12-month follow-up, regardless of the length of lease. So if someone has been placed in an apartment for 12 months, they're required under their statute to go back and reinspect. We're not in the city here. Someone can rent effectively a unit for multiple years and not be subject to a reininspection. And so we have our own ordinance.
Is there a limit to how many inspections for an apartment for you? I think it's three.
Well, there's a limit to how many are charged.
How many are charged?
There's, in the city ordinance, there's the limit to how many you're charged for.
How many is charged?
Uh, two, the first two are charged for, the third's not, in any given calendar year.
Calendar, okay.
Any other questions? So now, are we making a motion to make the revision? Do we, do we need public hearing?
Call for a public hearing.
Okay. So, calling for a public hearing. Moving that? Second, all's in favor? Aye. Okay, very good. And I assume this might, I assume this might involve you too.
Yes.
Muchoian, commercial property inspections.
All right. What is it?
Commercial property inspections.
Commercial property inspections. Currently, there's another, another attempt here at gaining a well-rounded and more consistent compliance activity and communication between, currently, right now, annually, state mandated that play, commercial buildings and places of public assembly need to have an annual inspection, physical inspection done by officer, state, and I'm offended, state mandate that we're, we're required to perform. We do that. And we do that for hundreds of commercial buildings and places of public assembly annually. We're also required by the state, when someone goes in and does that inspection, that commercial building, place of public assembly has several compliance requirements throughout the year. For instance, sprinkler systems are inspected twice a year, elevators are twice a year, ancil and fire suppression and alarm systems have, can have multiple inspections per year. What we, what we ask of, of the building owners is that when they have those, when we go and do an inspection, there, as those subsequent inspections are going to happen throughout the year, we're asking for them to supply us with those inspection reports so that we know we have a maintained continued compliance in that building throughout the year. They, we've had little success with that, as everybody that owns a private building is, you know, busy and doing their thing. We have little resources enough to continue to grab the several hundred properties that we do annually and, you know, make our monthly calls, did you get your sprinkler done? Did you get these things done? What we're hoping to do here is make a requirement that the vendor providing the inspections, whether it be a sprinkler, an alarm system, an ancil system, any of the required life safety and functioning system inspections in a commercial building, a place of public assembly annually. When they perform that inspection, they upload that to the city and/or a third-party designee if we choose. They do that to us, and it's a vendor requirement. And because these vendors own and have to operate under very strict state licensing and things, they're dealing with life safety systems, they have the technology and the capabilities of emailing and uploading those, those requirements, those inspections to us. This would allow us to be realistically maintaining a year-wide compliance through an administrative person after the physical inspection is done, knowing if a building is, hasn't had a sprinkler inspection, knowing if they haven't had an ancil system, you know, inspected. So the people are entering places of public assembly, we can be relatively sure. And at this point, it's, every municipality, I think, has this obstacle when you're asking for these things manually, you're asking a, a building owner to continue to supply you with information on continuing inspections. If you don't get them, we really don't have that knowledge. And as a general practice for public safety, this is a very, very easy way to have this done. There'd be no cost to the building owner for this. There's no additional fees or anything that goes. We would just require that that, that service provider provide to us in electronic form the results of those inspections. And what we would do is then we're going to build a database with the annual dates or bi-annual dates of those inspections and hope to be able to work with the vendors to create flags that where we can say in a month from now, this sprinkler inspection has to be done at this property. Email back and forth, make sure that that maintains an appliance. If for some reason that isn't done, say the building owner's reluctant to have something done or doesn't, can't, can't schedule that, 30 days post of that, that vendor would then let us know. And we would know that that building has a non-compliant sprinkler or a non-compliant ancil system, something that generally can affect the public safety of that building. At that point, we're able to intervene at a much, a much more rapid rate than typically what happens. And this is very typical, we'll wait till the following year, go back in the same year, the same date, same time, we'll say, you're three months behind on this, you're two months behind on this, you can't complete your inspection until you get this caught up. Well, those are two or three months or maybe longer, a critical system that has not been inspected. And, and it's our requirement by the state to have that information. We just simply haven't found a way, it's effective or resource effective to get all that information and compile it and just keep bringing it to us. So by using, using the vendors to provide that to us, we think we're going to get a much more real-time compliance picture of the public assembly buildings in the city.
Questions?
You mentioned about a data provider, the outside on-
Well, there's several outside data sources that do that. We're going to, we're going to, we haven't committed to anything along that line. What we'd be more interested in is getting, when we go out annually, we do collect who is the sprinkler, who is the ancil, who is that, making contact with them, letting them know there's a new city ordinance that says as you perform these inspections throughout the year, it is your requirement to bring that information to the city. You know, it's something that we, we don't, as other cities, and I've spoken to other cities that went to this type of formatting, this type of information collection, have been very successful at, you know, something that is streamlined, the vendors are happy to do it. And also know that if a vendor's providing us information, that there's a reluctance to have one of these inspection systems done in a timely fashion, because it is business for them, we're able to react to that building and that, that commercial building owner. We're able to then contact them and say, listen, this was due at this date, it hasn't been performed. You're, you're in non-compliance right now of your requirements to be able to have the public and have your business open. So we can motivate that building owner to make sure that his life safety systems are in compliance. So we're not going to wait two or three or four months or even longer when we come back down and get our annual to that building again.
This is not costing us anything?
Well, it costs the city absolutely nothing. There's nothing I'm, I'm asking for that would need a financial resource need for what we're doing. It's a database that we will maintain and collect. It's a matter of having this be a requirement to the vendors, knowing that they're going to do inspections in the city of Skidnahtity. They have to upload that to us.
And if they refuse to upload it?
If they refuse to upload it, then we can certainly impose, much like we would any other non-compliance violation, we can impose a fine on them, we can restrict their abilities to, to do inspections in the city if they don't want to comply to that. There's a number of things that we could build into this that could provide us the authority to say, you need to do this. We need to know that you've been in this building and this building is either in or out of compliance. And I think the in-compliance is one, but when they go and inspect someplace that has needs of several repairs, you know, maintenance of things that are obviously going to have costs associated with them, they choose not to do those things, well, they've created a public safety issue right there. You know, if they wait three or four months, the revenues are there until they get some fix, God forbid, something happens in that interim, you know, and we had the requirement to be aware of it. The vendor knew of it, the building owner knew of it, you know, it just creates a very bad scene for everyone. So this is, I think, a way to go about getting this information, keeping it timely and keeping the buildings in compliance throughout the year. But then, you know, we've been remiss in doing so, but we haven't had the resources to do so. So I think the vendors would be very-
I think it's a good thing, I mean, with the staggering of these inspections, give your office more leeway to-
Well, it allows up to that one physical inspection, administrative person could effectively monitor all the commercial buildings from their desktop, you know, at that point. We would know, we would have these flags built into our database, knowing when something's supposed to happen at a building, because annually we're there and getting that information from them. It's just we haven't had the ability or follow-up with the resources to physically get on. I mean, it's hundreds and hundreds of inspections on top of the hundreds of buildings that we do. So I think this would work well for us.
What do we need to do? This, is this a changed code due to-
Yeah.
Public hearing? This is called for public hearing to- And do you, can we kind of flesh out what the fines or ramifications would be for a vendor, just so we're aware? Is that, like, is it pretty much standard stuff or would it be unique to this situation?
I'd have to check through the code a little more time to see if there's anything in there that, there is one general provision of the code that says that something is violated and there's not a set fine or reschedule for that, then it's $150 and up. I'll read through and everybody will have access to the text of the, of the proposed changes before the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Just a little question. Will we have a proposed draft before the public hearing or that?
We always have a proposed draft before the public hearing.
And two, I think it's important to know that the vendors right now have very little influence over the building owners. If they say, you do it for your sprinkler inspection, and they say, I just, I'm not going to do it. The vendor has very little authority to impose on them. And so what the vendors would be doing is actually creating more consistent business for themselves. So they would have very little reluctance to want to comply to this, because they could, they could say, yes, I was supposed to do this at Proctor's, and Proctor's doesn't want to do it. Well, you know what? Proctor's shouldn't have a play tomorrow if they don't have a good sprinkler system. You know, and that's the type of thing that you'll get from the vendors, because then they now have the support of the city. And, and nothing more than just trying to keep these buildings safe, making sure that they're safe. And so they would have the authority to be able to, you know, report to us whether something's in compliance or not, or whether something really should be addressed by us and maybe looked at to the point where you can't do business until this is taken care of. You know, when we're inviting the public into these buildings, I think they should have a relative surety that that building is safe at all times.
So as for motion, call for public hearing? Second, all's in favor? Aye. Excellent.
Please. Thank you.
And lastly, ceremonial resolution for senior citizen of the year, pretty self-explanatory since I'm by, I'm sorry, the nominees, but I'm by Mr. Kojic. So once anyone has any questions, I'll ask for a motion to-
Well, it's not even answered. So who nominated them?
I cannot tell you that.
Okay.
But did you want, did you want to oppose giving a ceremonial resolution to the senior citizens of the year?
I just want-
To make sure it's fair, right?
Did you have a public statement about that?
It's fair, and everyone's an opportunity, right?
Absolutely. I just want to know who-
I'm sure Mr. Kojic can fill you in before Wednesday's meeting.
Chad, Chad looks like he has something to say, I'm not sure.
Yes.
From Woodland was honored by the state. And there was, yeah, you have those.
Oh, yeah, it's on the purple carpet. And Elsie Farrington by the county was recognized.
Whoa.
Definitely now.
Okay. Ms. Porterfield is on board. I was second, all's in favor? Aye, excellent. Any other business to come before the urban operations? Ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, I was second, all's in favor? Aye.
Called to water and recreation, Central Park baseball field discussion. Mr. Howard?
So, let me start with something. What is the specific that we're talking about? Is it C diamond?
I didn't ask for this. It's on the agenda. So I'm not sure who did.
This, anybody?
This results from a complaint that was received by email three cycles ago. Council requested that Jeremy come in front of the council and talk about the use of the three diamonds in Central Park.
Oh, okay. I think it was an email a while back.
There was an email, there was going to be a follow-up presentation.
Okay, I thought you'd responded back that had been resolved-
Right, yeah.
Relatively quickly after.
Very quickly, yeah. Well, just to go back to where we are and not to get long-winded about it, but you know, we, we have three diamonds at our baseball field. One is, we took out of play last year due to the fact of the liabilities that exist with the, with the current field. Right now, we are still in planning stage of seeing what our options are for that field and reaching out to, to see what some more options are. We are doing, we're in the process of attaining some surveys to get A diamond back up to where it's a playable surface for our kids in the area. So that Schenectady High School, the colleges, Union College, Schenectady Community College all have a, a good home to play and a respectable home to call.
So what's the timeframe, I guess, on, on doing that?
Timeframe on, on the A diamond? Right now, I wish I had more definitive answers for everybody. Right now, we're still in the bottom roots, planning stages of reaching out to see what needs to be done to make that field playable. So that involves engineers and things like that. I would honestly like to have this ready and done by next year. Do I think it can happen? Yeah. But that involves a lot of cooperation from, from, from everybody to, to get that up and running. That's making the work, all the work to be performed this fall to make it available for spring of next year. But it's still, like I said, we're still at the bottom, bottom basement.
When you talk about everybody that, that needs cooperation, could you be more specific, exactly what you need?
We're reaching out, there's, there's entities that have expressed interest in, in, in A diamond field themselves. There are the, there are the existing colleges that we have, the high schools express interest. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of history in A diamond. And it's saddening and disheartening to see that the field is like that. And there's plenty of entities that have expressed interest. We're just trying to reach out, put a bottom dollar on, a bottom dollar figure on it, and then kind of see what we can do, not only in-house, but also to help with maybe some sponsors and, and some in-kind servicing.
You're talking about colleges? You have Union College in there, you're talking about SCCC?
They play SC Diamond. SCC plays at B Diamond. They are, those are our two existing colleges that we, that we house right now.
So we're going to be splitting it up to the high school, the SCCC?
Probably. Maybe. You know, we can throw a lot of options on the table right now. Like I said, I wish I had more definitive answers. In a perfect world, yes, I'd like to see everybody chip in and let's get a, a great baseball field for those, you know, for everybody in the area that remembers the 60s and the 70s. I know I don't, but that was, it's almost like playing at Yankee Stadium.
Well, I don't remember the 60s.
But it was almost like playing at Yankee Stadium. And it's near and dear to my heart, I know that. And it's, it's, I'm probably along, long list, and I'm low on the list of people that really take pride in that field. And we are, we are going to find a way to get that back up and running. Not only, you know, for the high school kids, because that's where the problem arose this year, was that, you know, unfortunately, we only have two fields to, that I can cater to our baseball entities in the area. And I deal with two colleges, two, three, four high school teams, and the independent leagues that all are vying for two, two spots, or two baseball fields. If we had three, I'd be able to accommodate some more people. But we've worked well with Schenectady Bay Ruth and the, and Bishop Gibbons High School as alternative sites to help us out in accommodating as many teams as we possibly can.
And you said you don't anticipate this happening until next summer?
I would, no, I would love to have this, the ball rolling by fall. I would love to break ground by fall so that I can have a, at least a playable surface by next spring. It is a, you know, we can, it can't all be done in one year. It is going to have to be a three to four, five-year process to get where we actually would like to be. But we start small. The first goal is to get that field so it's not a liability to the city and people can enjoy that, that park and, and the facilities that we have.
Okay. Any other questions?
I will bring more to the table once I have more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before health and recreation? Okay?
I'm going to return.
You're second?
I'll second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Very general.
Call to our public safety, Edward Wright, Memorial Justice Grant.
Everybody has paperwork there in front of them, but this is a local solicitation, it's a little bit different than our normal grants, excuse me, what I mean by that is, they kind of give us the money and kind of make up our list afterwards, tomorrow, we'll post this on our website, and part of the grant requires that we solicit any ideas from the community and our city council over the next 30 days, and which we will, you know, open that tomorrow, I want to wait till tomorrow to get your feedback from the city council tonight, but generally, our doc, in past years, this year, we get fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, this is a grant that we share with the county, and we had a meeting with Bob Carney, VA's office, and, you know, they have their wish, wish we have ours, and with that said, generally, we split the baby in half, and we take half, and they take the other half, and we kind of do our thing, I know they're looking to partly fund their gang investigator, which was a benefit to the city as well, because he primarily works in the city, and then we have some other operational needs that we, you know, we want, we have ideas, we have, hate to throw out there right now, but because, you know, we're trying to ideas from the city council and/or, and/or the community, but one is our camera system, our interview room camera system, it's seven, eight years old, and it's in need of some repair, what I mean by that is not broken, but updated our software, updated some of the servers and the hard drives, we're probably talking in the area of fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, however, through the VA's office, they have a grant for five thousand dollars that they can also apply towards that funding source, through J, we'd be looking at probably about eleven thousand dollars to apply towards that, we as a city would get, should have did this math before, half to twenty, uh, half to fifty, five, fifty-six thousand, let's call it, and basically twenty-eight thousand dollars that we have as the police department spend, so it's not much money, this is based on crime stats, it's a formula that the government uses, it's kind of ours, you know, we can't really lose it, however, you know, we have to come up with, what we, you know, how we want to spend it, so...
Questions?
No match.
Go ahead.
Just one question, how does the, how are we getting the word out to the public that we want their input, other than this?
Through our, through our website, and, you know, we generally post on our website and ask for anything, skidnahtitypd.com.
Can you send a link to the council, so we can share it on our Facebook pages and get it out?
We'll put a link on, we have a link already on the, on the city page, the police department, and that goes from there, yes, we'll send it.
Yeah, if you would, if you want to, I'll help you through it out.
Yep, and what we do is when we post it, we actually post the whole application, so when people have, there are requirements, certainly we can't find, so people have to read through it before they give us their suggestions, and it's not much money, we have a couple of our own ideas, but however, you know, just, we got to thumb through it, because there are a couple of things, can't remember what they are, can't buy cars, or they, some other stuff like that, it's bigger items, but...
Why not?
So, again, it's not much, but...
Any other question? I can't call for a second, I can't call for, I'm a one-line island today.
Oh, no.
So...
Oh, no, I'm not calling for a second.
You're calling for a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do, we don't need any, we don't need to do anything with this right now, right? Everybody's looking for...
No, I don't at this point, I'm gonna say six weeks from now, I asked for more in 30 days, I'll go back to you in 30 days, just have to make you publicly aware of it, but we, you know...
Six days, you're gonna get back to us?
About, whatever, more than 30 days, let's say six weeks, because, you know, city council agenda, whatever, after 30 days, I'll, I'll put it back on the agenda and just come ask for it through most of the city council, and give you what we've come up with, any ideas and so forth, defend it.
Do we coordinate our input through public safety, too?
Now, it's okay to contact me directly, but you're more than welcome to do that if that's okay as far as...
Sounds like you would go directly to the police department.
Yeah, if people go on the website and respond directly, or even call us up, so...
All right, as you're here, let me just give two thousand and fourteen grants award.
This, this, yep, no, thank you. This one here is formerly known as, as impact, that's been for 10 years, the governor saw fit to change it to give, and give is what basically is involving, they wanted more money spent towards homicides and shooting investigations and the prevention of obscene, so with the give, we had to kind of really radically change our application this year to what we did the past 10 years, to focus on their focus crimes, again, homicides and shootings, we did that, we came up with a proposal with the partner ABCs, which is the DA's office, probation, sheriff's office, and we have a series of meetings over about a 30-day period, they give us about four, five, six weeks to put the application in, to come up with a strategy, and with a strategy of budget, I attached the budget, it should have been from you, basically, is the award that they provided for us, this year, our award as a city is three hundred, yeah, almost three hundred and sixty-five thousand, that is up a little bit over last year, a few thousand, but it really kind of shows that some cities, some communities did go down in their grant awards, and we, you know, obviously, they like their plan, they like what we're doing, so it's, it's been the focus crimes we have to focus on, so, and there you'll see that it funds a couple detectives that'll be, you know, used during shooting incidents and the homicides as well, crime analysts, and then there's some money for overtime, both from the detective's standpoint and a patrol's standpoint.
Just a question, is this grant money already, I mean, is it budgeted in the budget, meaning we already anticipated it, or is this in addition to money we expected to spend, and so now we can spend three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars more than we thought we would?
No, you can't spend more.
You're saying, something, do we already anticipate this, or is this an additional to what we've already put in our budget for spending?
This starts July 1st, this particular grant through June 30th, we set up a T account, special grants account, so it's nothing that goes against our operational budget, it's set up, it's set up so we, you know, there's revenue line, if I speak a bit better, I obviously can, you know, and then it's offset with our expenditures, so anytime we spend money, say, on patrol overtime, we have a special project code that gets assigned to this particular grant, and when an officer works that, that person's overtime card goes in, they go...
I understand how it pays, so I guess, someone asked my question, so that this, this was not in the current operating budget, it's in addition to balanced, right?
Right.
Expense and income expense, so it has plus and a minus, but this is in addition to any hours or headcount that we have budgeted in the current budget?
Correct, we set it up as a separate account, if anyone thought, and if, yes, we have to stay within that budget, and we can only do operationally what we can, or do what in our budget.
Okay. Any more questions?
Again, no match on this one either, just...
So, are we moving to executive grant?
Yes, in this case, yes, yes, please.
I'm okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, parking meter, final consideration?
Instead of final consideration on this, what we need to do is go back and have another public hearing, the legislation was done at the time of the first public hearing, but it may not have been fully available to the public, so, given that, procedurally, it makes sense to go and make sure that everything's done by law.
Okay. So, call for public hearing?
Will make motion, call for public hearing, please.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. CPH to men, chapter 248, to vehicle and traffic, Mr. Ridley, you want to start it?
Yes, I've had complaints, and I think you have, too, John, and the other council people, that's not covered in this code about very large vehicles, and they don't come under this ordinance, they have six wheels, and they're very large, and they park regularly on city streets and residential areas, so I talked to the commissioner about this, and he recommended that we change part B of this article, and after talking to him, I, it says no bus or commercial vehicle, and I was going to recommend adding recreational vehicle, because these are large motorhomes, but Commissioner Bennett, he recommended that we just change it to saying no vehicles exceeding one tonne capacity and/or which has at least a six-wheel base, shall be parked or stored between the hours of 12:00 a.m. through 6:00 a.m., inclusive in any street in any residential district, so that will cover it, because apparently, I was under the impression they were residential vehicles or residential, I'm sorry, commercial vehicles, but they're not, they're not considered that, they're considered, they're considered...
Yes.
Passengers vehicles, and they're very large, it's like a Wade store bus, one of those that I've had complaints about, so if we put no vehicles, and I think that should cover it, because not too many people have six wheels in their cars, I don't think that's going to be available, and one tonne capacity, so it'd have to be a very large truck with six wheels, to be parked in a residential thing, so that's what we, this is to call for a public hearing, see if any...
What about people who have duly, duly trucks, they have six wheels, I mean, a regular truck that has two wheels in the back, I mean, it's some people's main form of transportation.
With duly trucks? I'm not familiar with that.
A lovely city right now, that has my white truck.
But is it one, it's not over one tonne capacity, I don't think?
Yes.
Because I don't think that's fair, you know, I mean, if it's, you're only, I mean, they're a regular truck, they just have four wheels in the back, I mean, I get what you're saying, I don't, I'm not, I don't have any problem with that, but I think we need a provision to make sure that people have, that has duly trucks aren't expected.
What is your truck, Vicki, it's a tonne and a half?
I think so, yeah.
Is it? I thought it was a one-tonne, I think, the bigger's a three-quarter tonne.
I didn't need to comment with it, but it's a sample, you know, I mean, it's...
They might refer, like, they have a half-tonne truck, three-quarter tonne, one-tonne, a lot of them are considered a one, even though you can put more in it, I think they consider it a one-tonne truck.
It's all came about because of the recreational vehicle parking on streets for extended hours.
Yeah.
Because that would cover it.
There'd be recreational vehicles, too.
Or you, yeah, I guess.
Counselor, you got any ideas?
Because you don't want commercial either, right, if it's used for personal use, but...
I know, don't all trucks have to be less than commercial?
No.
I see a lot of them down the place.
Not all, not all of them, if they wish to do that.
If everyone's okay with the general idea of working for the RV situation that right now isn't covered, if you call for a public hearing to amend the code for that, then we'll write something and send it out to everyone, make sure that it's what we want before the public hearing, we just don't have to be so specific with it today to really hash it out, if you don't want to, you're welcome.
I'm good with that, because there's been a lot of problem with that, people parking their RV, you know, for extended hours on city streets.
We'll draft something that's a little broader than that, kind of what you're going for handling the other situation with dulys.
Okay, I'll move...
Call.
Call for public hearing, please.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business for public safety?
Lou, please, Jerry.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, call to order Public Service and Utilities, Erie Boulevard and North Street intersection, Mr. Wong.
Good evening. The two that you have in front of you for Erie Boulevard are related to two packets, so we can talk about them kind of both at one time. In accordance with local minister federally procedures, which this is a federally project, the city's connected requested to establish itself as lead agency in compliance with State Environmental Review Act, which is SEER, the city completed the short environmental assessment form in with our consultant, of course, Barton LeJudas, that is on the second packet, which says the negative declaration one, and that will have that short EAF there. We also sent a letter, which you have in the first packet, to all the involved agencies, which include DEC, the DOT, State Historic Preservation Office, and the county, and what you have there is documentation that none of them had any protest to that, and they all accepted the city's establishment as lead agency, and concurrently, since they've established that, we can also, at the same time, pass the negative declaration, because we haven't had any environmental impacts with that, that's just a reconstruction of an existing intersection, so that's a kind of a basic history of what these two are about.
Any questions? Okay, we'll do one by one, I'm taking a motion for number one, because we have two separately. So, Lou?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And for number two, negative declaration? Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Good job.
Anything else to come before Public Service and Utilities?
Lou, please, Jerry.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Where, Jerry?
Order claims, I'm going to motion, going to second session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.